Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to July 11th, 2018 meeting of Danville County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for being here, taking interest in the business of planning and zoning. We'll begin with prayer. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it. We thank thee for this community we live in, this country we live in, the freedoms we enjoy, safety and protection you've granted us. We pray you continue to bless us in those ways and help us remember that they come from you. We offer our thanks for those young men in coach who was rescued in Thailand and pray that you would be with them or turn them to their health and all would do well for them. We pray for our men and women who are serving in our armed forces, defending our freedoms and protecting our rights. Pray that you would resolve those conflicts and bring them home to our loved ones as soon as possible. Be with us today as we make decisions that affect our community and individuals involved. May those decisions be the best for all involved and that we would strive to do your will in all things. Christ's name we pray, amen. I just heard on the news a while ago, for what it's worth, that the pump that was pumping the water failed and that cave flooded and nobody could have been rescued. And it's happened two hours after they got those last boys out. I just thought, what? You know, yeah, two hours and it said it would have been over. That about gave me cold chills when I heard that. Yeah, anyway, really, really good to hear that that worked out so good. Call the meeting to order. Item C approval minutes, regular meeting, June 6th, 2018. Everyone should have a copy of those minutes. Question or discussion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Susie moves, we approve. Dent seconds, all in favor. Vote unanimous, abstained from that vote, being not present for that meeting. Item D, financial report from May and June 2018.
I'll just, quick item. May was in your packet. We had an extra week, so Jenny got June done, just as a extra item you could look at. It actually is helpful when we get to the budget, final budget, because it shows kind of our end of the year numbers. You guys can approve May and June if you choose, or just May, and we can look at June next month, but they're both at your seat, May and June's finance reports.
Any issues with anything, Stephen? Financially, we are looking okay, or what? Okay. Terry moves, we approve. And Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve, May and June budget reports. Hearing none, questions, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item E, letter of credit, Amberbev. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah, Amberbev is the business you see off the bypass. You see the painted wall that says vodka and something else. I can't think of all the different names on it. That's Dr. Baker's business. We're holding the letter of credit for several items, $47,150. We met with them last week, and actually, all that's left to do is drainage and some minor seeding. So at this point, the letter of credit expires August 2nd, which is kind of puts us in a tough situation here. So this month, what we're going to ask you to do is actually renew the letter of credit in a reduced amount. I need to change that amount to $19,550. So what we approve this month is, again, a renewal of the letter of credit in the reduced amount of $19,550. That's assuming they don't get done by August 1st, and then we have to get a new letter of credit, and we'll have to get that before the next meeting. If they get finished by chance by the end of the month, which is the plan, we'll come to you next month and release the letter of credit. And they may actually post that as a cash bond. They said it's pretty tough to get letter of credits, and this is going to be even a smaller amount for a shorter timeframe. So Dr. Baker said they may just post that as a cash bond, because they are literally just days away from opening the business. And I would want you guys to vote on that and that reduced amount, $19,550.
So move. Jeff moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item F, subdivision approvals, nothing there. And G, public hearing, not new business budget committee report. Terry, anything?
What you have in your packet is the final budget. You just look at the far right-hand column, and a few columns are highlighted in yellow. Those are the changes from the preliminary budget. I'm just going to touch on two or three items. You know, line four, under revenue, the county basically only approved giving us what they gave us last year, which was $65,000 versus the $70,000 we had asked for. Then down at line 17, the other major change under revenue is that we're budgeting for a reduction, which we'll cover a little bit later on fees, and so that is about an $8,000 reduction. So total revenue is, in the final budget, is about $13,000 less than what it was in the preliminary budget. Then if you go to expenses and go to line 30, that's really the major change there, and that's the retirement, you know, the adjustment of how much we have to be setting aside from retirement. And that actually went down $7,000 compared to the preliminary budget. And so if you flip the page over, you know, on line 63, there is a small increase for Bluegrass Area Development, what we're planning on spending with them for about $2,500. So total expenditures are down about $3,000 on line 77 compared to the original budget. And so if you go to line 78, which is, I guess you would say that, what's our reserve, our net, that says net income, but it's really reserve, isn't it, Steve? Or how much we end up with at the end of the year? We originally budgeted, we thought we'd end the year with about $70,000 in the bank, and so with a revised budget, that would be down to about $60,000 in the bank. And basically, we're overspending our revenue by about $20,000 next year, which is not too different, I think, than what we did this year. And so the next two, three years, you know, we'll have spent our reserves down to where we're going to have to be spending what we, what we, what we get coming in and not drawing down the reserves. So that's the final budget.
Questions, discussion on the budget report? Anyone?
What would you see as the way to continue to have a reserve? Do you have a suggestion?
You mean, what do we do to bring those two numbers?
A little bit closer so that you have a little bit of reserve. We're not going, not working towards this.
Well, we want to try to maintain at least about $20,000 of reserve, which is the recommended 10% of your, and so as we approach that, I guess what we've been somewhat assured by the county and to a degree the city, that as long as we're managing our business very well and we're doing the things that they'd like to see us do, that they'll probably increase their appropriations a little to balance that out, as long as we're running a tight ship.
Thanks.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'll just add, I guess, mics. We're going to talk about this and fees in just a second, because Terry hit right on it. We're, zoning permits are projected to go down, because we're going to make a fairly major change to these zoning permits, and we're going to, we're actually proposing it, if you guys accept it. And it really changes how we do some things in the community, which I think is really positive. So it goes to Terry's point. I think over time, our goal here is to show the city and the county that we're making some pretty big things, changes for the consumer, and it may mean we need a little more help on the top end on the appropriation side. But the goal is just to have a 10% reserve. But Terry's right, if our expenses are more than our revenues, over time, that reserve's going to drop. Dropped about $18,000 this year. It's going to drop a little bit more next year. The goal is to attack some expenses if they're there, and kind of the big elephant on the page is really personnel. I mean, it truly is, you know, that's mostly where we spend our funds, is on the staff, and we may have to someday look at that issue. Retirement's a big factor, and then we're going to talk about a couple of other things that maybe are our way to get that. The goal is hopefully someday, we're taking in so much, spending the same amount, we carry that 10% reserve flat every year. I think budget looks good, and the budget committee did a good job. Wendy's not here today. David, Terry, and Wendy worked hard on this, and I appreciate all their help.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do they have a motion to approve?
Motion.
David moves, we approve.
Second.
Dent seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Advisory Committee, Personnel Committee, I don't think we have anything. Advisory Committee, anything?
Either man.
Okay. VGADD, Bluegrass Area Development.
Terry just mentioned that in the budget. That's in your packet. Everything should be in order behind the budget in your packet, but sometimes things got aligned, but it should say agreement between Bluegrass Area Development District, Danville Planning and Zoning Commission. That's our online mapping product. The agreement's $5,000 a year. We'd only used about $2,200 this year. They only bill us for what we use. We're going to budget, we're budget the same amount, enter into the same contract. The goal is we would know we're come close to using the $5,000. But they're doing our mapping. The online map now's kind of getting out there, getting pretty successful. A lot of people are using it, keeping it updated, taking it kind of to the next level that it is now. And then, of course, they print us paper maps and other things. All our mapping is housed at the Bluegrass ad. So going up there Friday to actually, we realized that several zone changes that you guys have done in '16 and '17 aren't reflected on the map, so as we continue to see errors, we go up there and get those revised, so our online map is accurate. So that agreement would just give us authority to enter into it for fiscal year 19.
I see a typo in there.
They sent it, I saw some too, and last year, they had her name wrong, as you remember, that different county name. I'm glad to get that fixed and...
Questions? Need a motion to approve?
I move, we approve.
General moves, we approve. Dent seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item five, fee schedule revision.
Should have that in your packet, and Terry may jump in here too, or David. As you know, we revised fees in October of last year, and that first change was changing the left-hand side of the column, which were kind of all the zone changes, conditional use permits and variances. Everything went down to more market-friendly rates. Plats were revised substantially, and we've had nothing but compliments on our fees, I think, in the last few months. The one item we left alone were zoning permits. They're down in the right corner. So what we're proposing, we left those alone, and again, to give you guys an idea, right now, if someone builds a house, they have to come in and pay 16 cents a square foot to us, and they go to the county, and the county charges them 10 cents a square foot. So that's 26 cents a square foot to build a house. In a community, we're trying to encourage affordable living and housing options and grow our economy, just doesn't seem like very good business model. And then on our side, it's tough for us, because everyone that comes in the office and you say you have to, you need a zoning permit, and it's 16 cents. I mean, they just lightened us, because they're like, well, county's 10 cents, you're all 16 cents. County's actually got a building inspector that comes out on your site, checks the drywall, checks the framing. We say, keep it eight foot off the property line. Zoning permits are valuable, I see the value in them, but what we charge and the work we produce, it's not equal. So what we're proposing, we'd love to roll the zoning permits right off the table someday for the consumers, but we can't afford to do that in the budget. So what we're proposing is kind of step two, which is to reduce the residential side of the zoning permits. And what we're proposing, if you're zoned agriculture and you're over five acres, we do zero out on the property. It's pretty easy to meet your setbacks when you have a five-acre track. So we're proposing that agricultural zoned properties, over five acres, would be exempt from any zoning permits. And if you're zoned residential, they'd go from 16 cents to 10 cents, which is exact same as the county. And if you're doing an accessory building, garage, a deck, no more billing it by the square foot, we just go to a flat $50 fee. That's where that $8,000 revenue drop comes in in the budget. We anticipate by going from 16 cents and billing everybody, everything, all the time, that would, that would cost us about $8,000 in revenue. So these changes, I think, are fairly substantial. Essentially, the media's not here today, but I saw in the paper of the day, our reporter got selected to a national panel of some kind. So we're not going to get any publicity on this until people do this one by one, but this is a big deal, if you guys support this, going to 10 cents. Now, we left the commercial and multifamily rates the same, because we actually go out there, like you just saw in Amberbev, landscape, parking. We have more to review on a site like McDonald's, or, you know, a new development, like it's happening with Buffalo Wings and Rings. We're out on the site more, because we have to check all these kind of, you know, parking standards and whatnot. But on the residential, or someone building a house out on seven acres in the county, there's nothing we do. I mean, there's literally nothing to do, except to come in, make them fill out a piece of paper that's just like the county, collect their money, tell them what the setbacks are, and that's it. So at some point, we'd like to see these zoning permits on the residential side, at least get really consumer-friendly, but this is what we think is step one, which is just roll them down to 10 cents. The county is considering doing something different. They've been talking about it. We had a good budget committee meeting, and the county treasurer showed up, and we talked about this a little bit, and she was a little surprised that the county billed the way they bill. It's just, it's just kind of tough on the consumer out there to have to come in here and pay these two permits, go to two places, fill out two sets of paperwork to build a house. So we thought the residential side, we ought to take care of the folks building houses in our community. Commercial, multifamily, they're bigger projects, and they normally can afford maybe some different development fees, but we thought this was a fair first step. The other thing that's changed on here is the construction review. We got rid of the letter of credit administrative fee, and we do have 1% for public construction review. If we did any real street construction and oversight, we can revisit that number, but that, that's a change. And then our ad fees went up. I think you guys should notice that in the left-hand column at the bottom. Just a few months ago, a typical ad was costing us $95 per ad. They've jumped up to $150. So I don't know that the paper's been sold, or it's different. We send our bills now to Frankfurt, and so a single ad, one line, is $150. So we raised that to at least if we have to re-advertise or have a special call meeting that whoever requests that, at least, at least we're flat on our ad cost. So this would be a new second step on the fee schedule. I'm glad to answer any questions. Budget committee looked it over. We talked about it quite a bit. It's reflected in the budget you just adopted, because, again, this, this means we're going to lose some of that zoning permit money, but we think for the better good of the community, this is a good approach.
Questions?
Terry, anything you want to add?
Only if you want to talk a little bit about how what we were charging compares to other communities. I think we are, other planning and zoning departments.
Yeah, we talked about that. We looked around the state, and most communities do not charge zoning permits. You get a building permit. Most communities go get a building permit at the city or the county, and the zoning review is done in coordination with that permit. You don't charge an extra fee. There are a few communities that charge zoning permits, but most of them are $100 or $200 for residential structures. There's very, we couldn't find anyone that was charging 16 cents a square foot to build a house, and you guys can do some math on that, but we had someone come in to build a 2,800-square-foot house, had a pretty good-sized deck on it. I think Jenny would have to remind him, $600?
It was around $500.
$500? $500 permit fee, then you go pay the county. And again, there's not much, we check for parking or landscaping or whatnot, but 10 cents is easy math, too. So if someone comes in and it's 2,000 square foot, we can figure that one out pretty quick, and we don't have to get the calculator out. So there's a little, little bit in there, too. It's still a lot. I mean, you know, 2,400-square-foot house, that's $240 that we'd be collecting for, just to look at the layout and say, hey, you got to meet 10-foot setbacks or 8-foot setbacks. That's really all we do in residential. Again, we're exempting ag. That may be something, you guys, but we feel if you're zoned out in the county over five acres, you want to build a barn, a deck, a house, setbacks normally work, and there's not a whole lot we do. So...
Do we need a motion?
So move. Jeff moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item six, fiscal year 19 work plan.
We'll get through this really quick. You've got two sets in your, in your packet there. The first one is, as you guys know, we'll just skip to the second page. I presented to the planning commission in October, what I guess would be a work plan for the staff, for me. And as you can see, most of the items we completed. The only thing that didn't get done was the zoning ordinance. Drafts are done, but the advisory committee has not met on that yet, because we focused on the comp plan and subregs. The Perryville zoning map revision is at the signature collection stage, and the subregs, we got the whole subregs adopted a month ago, but Articles 5 and 6 still need some housekeeping with the engineers from city and the county. So last year, most of the things got done, so I've come up with a list of things to do for this year, and again, you guys can add anything, any items you think, but it's interesting. So the fiscal year 18, 19 is what I'm proposing as my work plan. There'll be a lot of other stuff, but these are kind of the big things we'd like to get done. And as you look at that, we're going to talk about this in a minute, RFP, get these cash bonds closed out. The inter-local agreement's been discussed, but not ever finalized. We just did the fee schedule. The online map's ongoing. The reason there's not as much here is because the big project this year would be getting the zoning ordinance rewritten in-house. A complete rewrite of the zoning ordinance for all the communities is probably the goal here. That would include the sign ordinance and everything else. So it'd be pretty, pretty big task, but the goal, I've already got some draft articles ready to go for the advisory committee, and the goal would be, maybe by Christmas, we might be making some headway on that. Believe it or not, the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan are set to expire this fall. I know you guys are sick of hearing about the comprehensive plan, but that started way back in 2012. Took a long time. Planning commission got the plan adopted in 17. We amended it in the fall. Chapter nine, as you know, the goals and objectives expire five years, comes up in September. So I've already got a draft of an update. You guys have three options. You can look at the goals and objectives, say they, they look good, we'll keep them. You could tweak them slightly, or you could write brand-new ones. But after you do goals and objectives, they have to go to all the governments for ratification. So want to get that done this year. Subregs are done, again, except a couple articles. And then on, if you turn the page, I, this is really, I really want some guidance from you guys on this. It says other work plan options, and I put four items there that, again, I'm not proposing we do all these, but if there's one of those that you guys think would be pretty neat we could do. These are more planning-oriented projects. The first one is relabeling the Danville Flume. As you guys know, we did the whole Perryville Flume, but Danville would be a pretty big project. I'm okay with doing that if, maybe sector by sector. A corridor study, that'd be fun to do. We can do those in-house. We don't have to contract those out. A zoning conversion, 12 is an interesting project, a zoning conversion in neighborhoods which are single-family but are zoned multifamily. When you look at the map, that's something we'd bring you guys, a bunch of projects, just say, hey, these neighborhoods are all zoned, NCC. It opens up the door to a duplex, yet they're all single-family. We could do a conversion project if you wanted. 13's interesting. We've got, we've got historic sites in the county, old places that were clearly businesses, things in the city that are mislabeled. We could convert things that we know were just zoned all agriculture out in the county, yet there was a store there someday. We could do a project like that. And of course, we could do an overlay or any kind of special study or corridor study you guys see fit. I'm okay with any of those items, it's just, you know, fill the time. If we're slow during the winter, if we can get the zoning ordinance done, you know, corridor study, probably takes us 30, 90 days if we did one. These conversions aren't a big deal.
What is a corridor, what entails, what's entailed in a corridor?
Well, well, a lot of communities do them different. Lexington does theirs, pretty over the top, but what I would envision, let's say 2168, we would, it's an undeveloped corridor. We would map the corridor. We would look at our flume. We would look at our zoning. We'd see, look for inconsistencies there. We might talk about entryway options. For example, the roundabout looks horrendous, in my opinion. You know, there might be some beautification, things we identify. There may be future development plan. It could be just a lot of things. Infrastructure, it would be a study to look at a corridor. It could be things to put protections in place to achieve, I think, what the objective was of the future land use map. It could be that. It could be, we set standards that become an overlay district in the zoning ordinance, so if something is done, it's done at a certain standard. Doesn't have to be that corridor, it could be a different corridor. We've got some areas that I feel are unprotected, even though I think in this room, everyone think, hey, 2168, no one's going to touch it. Well, it is all, some of it is zoned already. There could be projects coming tomorrow that there's no turning back unless you have, if you do a corridor study, it may give us recommendations to put in a zoning ordinance or put in the comp plan, or other policies that we might adopt to either protect the corridor, enhance the corridor, or have a development strategy for the corridor. We do have sewer running up 33 now. We have a roundabout. We have a path. We have a new road. Something's going to, we've got a lot of traffic, maybe traffic-oriented issues, but the corridor study could be any, any and above of that. Lexington will do them, you know, Man of War, they did a study before they built that. That was actually a study to actually lay out a piece of infrastructure, and then how it would look and how it would function. If you go back and read the original study and then drive it, something went wrong in their study.
It did work.
But they did that. It's just an idea. There could be another corridor you guys would like to see, you know, between Walmart, Junction City. We've got lots of land right there that's zoned. Something could land right there tomorrow. There'd be no protection, no turning back. It'd look like any other commercial, if that's what ends up landing there. Corridor study might give us some guidance on a tool we put in the zoning ordinance on how we might, again, make these entryways, first impression-type things. Just an idea. And I'm fine if we don't do any of these this year, because the zoning ordinance is going to be a big deal, because we do have to mess with signs under the Supreme Court case, and I think we're going to get bogged down on the zoning ordinance rewrite at some Again, if you guys are okay with that, this is kind of just the work plan.
So do you want us to pick one, or you just want to say which one?
It's up to you. Page, page one is definitely what I'm going for. That's on my to-do list. If there's something on that second page you guys want, if you want to just, we can bring it back later. These were just ideas. The flume relabeling in Danville is kind of a big deal, too. You know, taking a section of that and realizing, hey, we got the flume kind of all, kind of hodgepodge all over town. Bringing that back to the advisory committee or back to you guys, piece by piece, would be a cool project to do, too, which I'm fine with doing. We need to do that.
Aren't 10 and 12 related, or not?
10 is the flume. 12 is actually, we'd actually convert to zoning on things where we know there's a neighborhood.
Right.
And I'll give you an example. There's, there's parts of a neighborhood off, I guess, can't think of all the street names there. Bachman, Waterworks, you know, we got single-family pockets, but everything's zoned multifamily. And right now, there's a house that burned, there's a vacant lot. Well, duplex could pop up right in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. That's a good prime candidate. If we thought this was all footprint, was pretty much single-family housing stock, we ought to go convert that to GRA to make sure we don't get a multifamily use that might be detrimental to the neighborhood. It's just housekeeping on the zoning map is what it would be. Yes, sir?
But with developing a corridor study for that area between Junction City and Walmart, solidify more of the connection between Junction City and us and possibly have a better development and a better relationship with that area.
I'm going Junction tomorrow night to talk to them about a flume project and this whole kind of 10th seat at the table issue here. So it's going real good. Yeah, I think a corridor study between Chatters South, there's a lot of undeveloped land there that we could look at what the zoning is. It might end up giving us recommendations to convert some zoning.
And also, the airport is out there.
It's true.
And I think having a really good comprehensive plan on, because there is, there's always issues between Junction City and Boil County and about the airport itself. I know, just because I'm related to it, but, but it would be great if maybe that we could But, but it would be great if maybe that we could help out with the planning of that area, just because it seems to be a natural development area on that south side.
Yeah, we could go all the way to the county line, actually. We could start from the county line all the way to the bypass. And what we might end up doing is looking at population demographics, growth potential, the zoning, the flume, inconsistencies. And the, the plan may just come back and say, change the flume to this, this, and this. Convert a few zoning districts. There may be a beautification effort, but it, it looks pretty attractive as you come into town. I don't see big issues there. But, but you could see how one business just landing on the ground that just doesn't give justice to our community as an entryway could be a problem for, for the city, you know, so. Yeah, I think that, that's fine. If you guys want to do that, I'd love to do a project like that.
Suggestion.
And we could have a joint subcommittee that would be some planning commissioners, maybe some folks from Junction. I, I think that would be a great kind of olive branch approach, too, talk about that. And we'd get state involved in that, too.
Because the, getting, getting those people together is not easy, especially related to the airport and all of that. If they were having to get together, probably a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be a great idea. So, maybe include the, the flume for Danville and number, and we'll stop at eleven, and we'll just do a corridor study for one-twenty-seven from the county line to the city limits of Danville.
If everybody, I mean, that's just a suggestion.
I think that'd be fun, if you guys are okay with that. May not get there, but it's just a target. Well, that sounds good. So, again, that's, I'll just put that on my bulletin board. This is, and we'll come back to you guys and give you update on that.
We don't need a motion here.
No, sir. Thank you.
Item seven, the legal services RFP.
Yeah, let me just make a few comments. So, we first, the budget committee first brought this to the attention of the committee. Back in February, March, whenever we did the first draft of this year's budget, as we were looking through our expenditures and revenues and, oh, for the past three or four years, our, our spending on our legal services has increased from about ten thousand dollars a year to around twenty-five thousand dollars this year. And it's now become our second-largest expenditure outside of personnel. And so, the budget committee, as we looked for opportunities and things that we thought we should be doing, felt that we had a responsibility to make sure that we were, we as a commission were paying competitive rates for our legal services, since it's grown to be a very large part of our budget. And so, back in February, March, we advised you that our recommendation was is that we put together an RFP to, to confirm that what we were paying for our legal services was a competitive rate. And, and that's what's, the document that you have in front of you is that RFP that Steve has been working on and that the budget committee has reviewed a couple of times. And so, that's how it got on the agenda. And again, we originally talked about it several months ago, but now it's time to decide whether or not we want to go ahead and issue this RFP or not.
Commissioner Mannan, if, if I might jump in there. When we saw the two of us were planning to go ahead with this RFP, we read that as being some kind of dissatisfaction or concern. And what Bruce and I had hoped for was the opportunity to talk to the budget committee and address those concerns or dissatisfactions from those who had them. We have worked with this planning commission and its board of adjustment for seventeen years. I enjoy this work. We would like to continue to serve you in this capacity. And we'd hope to have the opportunity to talk to you all and come up with solutions that makes it workable for you to continue to work with us. But we will defer to the wisdom of the planning commission, but that was my message for you this morning.
Henry, I'd, I'd like to follow up on that to say that, from my perspective, we're absolutely pleased with the services you all have provided and the expertise you have provided this commission, so forth. So, I don't think, at least from my perspective, there's any dissatisfaction whatsoever. I think the, the only concern, or at least from, it would, might be just the expense that we've had to put out. But then, on the second thought on that, whomever we have as our, our legal counsel, it may have been still the same expense or very close to it. So, I, I don't think there's, there's any dissatisfaction with the service you all provide. In fact, I think it's been absolutely excellent
Thank you, Chairman.
from my perspective.
I'm going to comment, too, if it's okay, Steve.
I agree. There's no dissatisfaction, Henry. And I think in talking to Bruce, he maybe jumped the gun a little bit and that read more into it. The budget committee's sole purpose is looking at money. And to give you an example, we did an RFP for our auditing services. Got a little better deal. We got the same auditor. Same thing. There was no dissatisfaction with the audit. We had, we just thought putting out an RFP is a good business model. Bidding everything out every few years, I think is a smart way to, to run a, run a business and utilize taxpayer money. It may be we're right back in the same place, but I think the goal is, is put the RFP out, negotiate with you guys, obviously, see what else is out there in a competitive fashion and, and move forward with legal services. I think the challenges are, one interesting comment's come from a couple of planning commissioners, is if, Henry, you'll have to give us guidance on this. If you guys go back and talk to the budget committee and we actually negotiate a little bit, at some point, we move forward with the RFP, is that not put you guys in a position that's more advantageous to the other bidders? I mean, I think what we were hoping to do is put the RFP out and you guys would submit your proposal. There's no dissatisfaction. You're obviously going to score high in the qualifications and experience. You're going to, you know, kind of, it's like an incumbent. You're, you're kind of, you know, you guys got an advantage going into this, being our attorney. But I think the goal here is, is just to put out the RFP and let you all submit something. The goal is to get you a packet for sure. But I could see that we could use this as an opportunity to renegotiate and talk to about the budget, really. That's all, like Terry alluded to. But there's no dissatisfaction at all. This is the same thing we did with our audit.
It's, it's nice to have your reassurances this morning. Having looked at this recently in another capacity, use of legal counsel and other professional services is not an item that's subject to public bidding requirements. If it were other types of service contracts, but, but legal counsel is not something that's required to be bid out under four-twenty-four.
Well, this isn't a bid. This is an RFP, like we did for professional services, like we do for engineering or auditing or legal.
Right.
This isn't the first time I've done that. I had the same attorney at my other job for twenty years, and he went, had to go through this five times. Got a little upset each time. That's how we do business. Each time, funny enough, we got him to drop his rate, because it was competitive. So, it's not low bidder. We're not bidding. But again, we ended up the same attorney for twenty years. But he did this several times, and I think it was just a good way to run the business, is to bid your services out or do an RFP for professional. Our insurance lines, as you all know, we put them all out there. We did make a change. We ended up saving the planning commission almost five thousand dollars. So, I, I think that's where we're at mentally. It's just more about the budget. And, but we'll do whatever. If we think we can go back to the budget committee, we'll do that. Yes, sir. Vince?
Yeah, I, I think we have to, this is a good idea, but I think we have to make sure that, you know, that the quality of what we've done. Also, any new person or firm that would come into, would have to do lots of research that would cost us money. They're not going to do the research for free, I don't think. So, I'm just guessing that there could be, you know, there's some things that are
Sure.
extenuating, you know, make it, make it more challenging after the fact. If you get a lower, let's say you're, you know, looking for a lower rate, which is, you know, always nice. But sometimes that ends up to be a higher rate.
Sure.
And obviously, we're not going to be making, we would be bringing it back to the commission.
Right, but still, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a thought, you know.
With, with an RFP, are we required to accept a low bid?
No.
No.
In fact, the scoring criteria weighted heavily on experience. Cost was in there, and there were other factors, references and stuff. So, the, the score, there's a scoring criteria in there on an RFP. The budget committee and probably the chairman would be involved in the scoring of the, if we get proposals, who knows? We may only get one proposal. We may get none other than our current counsel. I think the idea was to just get the proposals, look at what's out there. And ultimately, if we can save a buck, that's where we're going. We did it with the audit. It turned out okay. It's not something to be fearful of. But I think our attorney, what, what Henry's mentioned and Bruce has said, they'd like to come back to the budget committee and talk to them, maybe one-on-one, before the RFP's sent out. I, I could see us doing it either way. We could send the RFP out to state, and we could, in the meantime, have a discussion with our current counsel. And maybe we cancel the thing. I'm not sure.
That's, that was my concern, that they come back with, somebody's a nickel less than they are, and
No, it, it's, it's weighted.
even though you don't know anything about their
It's weighted on experience.
You can, you can choose however you want, on whatever you want.
That's right.
We're not bound by that at all.
And, and one other small point, board of adjustments uses the same counsel. So, I mean, we got to get, they're satisfied, too. As Henry knows, he serves on the BOA. They've, they've been tickled to death with what's going on. This is just really about what Terry said. At some point, legal's a big chunk of our budget. We've got money right now, but it's not sustainable to spend twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year on legal, knowing that that reserve's going to drop. Because the bigger picture is the zoning permits, what we're doing for the consumer. So, we're just, we're just scratching at any item in the budget to save a buck. And that's really why we're doing this.
Depending on what, on what happens legally, we may go above that in the next year or two.
Could. We could. We don't, that's
Lawsuits happen, or the pipeline thing
Jerry's right.
on us, or, or whatever it might be. So, we don't know for sure.
That's true.
Stay below ten thousand, or twenty thousand, or fifty thousand. We just don't know that. Because in the past, we've had some legal issues that cost us a substantial amount of money.
Henry, you want to say anything else, or anything else to comment?
So, we have two options here. Unless there's further discussion, we can go ahead and release this and prove its release, or we can table it for further study or thought. Planning commission's prerogative on that, whatever you'd like to do.
Personally, I think we have an obligation to release it, you know, to put it out there. Again, no dissatisfaction with current counsel whatsoever. But we've heard the talk this morning on budget. You know, we've heard that the reserve is going down. And, and you're correct, Chairman, that, you know, we have no idea what the bottom line of the attorney fees are going to be in the future. But, you know, charged at an hourly rate, we don't really know if that's, you know, outrageous or not. So, you know, I'd just like to, I, I personally would like to see, you know, what else is out there and be more than happy to continue working with, with the people we work with, perhaps at a, at a better rate.
Henry, you all serve Jessup County Planning and Filing also.
Yes, sir.
Can you share if it's not too private, what your rate is for them, or?
It's the same rates that we charge y'all. I believe that Bruce charges slightly yet less than his typical rate for the services he provides to Danville.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Vince, you have something? I was, I was just going to say that you were talking about meeting with the commission. I, I also don't think it's a good idea, because the value of what you do is, you don't want to, if it's not disclosed, I think that's a good thing. But if it gives somebody else an opportunity, as Steve said, to, to have somebody like just underbid just for the heck of doing it, I, I'd say that would be a bad thing. So, if it's, if it's in a closed session, if that's allowed, I don't know. But, but I'd rather see that, because first of all, you're, you're long service in doing this and doing it so well. Why would we want to, why would you want to undercut yourself, so to speak, in a sense? So, personally, I'd rather see you do that in private if it's legal.
Understood.
One more thing.
Yes, Dave.
Here's the thing. So, before I got here, we were trying to control legal. And, and the process when I got here was, well, we'll call the attorney when we need him. So, they didn't attend to every meeting. I think the way we did this, well, we'll just have the attorney, we'll look at each agenda. Well, maybe we don't need attorney this week. BOA can move on this by themselves, or you guys can. I, I think that was the wrong approach. Maybe the costs have gone up specifically, because I've been here, because I thought from day one, I want the attorney at every meeting. You never know what's going to happen. Today's a good example. There's not a lot going on. We probably could have saved three, four hundred dollars. But I think it's important your attorney's at every board meeting. These are public hearings, and the BOA appreciates that. I've been satisfied with these guys. Bruce and I talked for forty-five minutes last night about a Junction City-related issue and a cell tower, which is interesting all by itself. I want to be able to call the attorney when we need to call him, if you all need to reach out. I want him at the meeting, and maybe that's ballooned the cost. But I think the goal here is, is let's get a different proposal, because I, I want to use the attorney more and more loosely with the board. And so, big picture, Henry, I guess, us only using you five months of the year, as opposed to we're saying we want an attorney every month. Maybe it, it's about the rate, and we'll end up at the same place we were two years ago when we called him five times a year, which was the maybe seventeen thousand, sixteen thousand range. I think big picture is, we want to use our attorney, and I want him at every single meeting. And I've been appreciative that they've been here, and I've actually made sure they've been at every meeting. So, probably that's one of the reasons we spent more money this year. And maybe Henry drives slow from Nicholasville. I'm not sure.
Any other discussion or questions, comments? Here we go.
So, we need a motion, right?
If somebody wants to make
I would make, I would make a motion that we release the RFP and in the next thirty days, you know, meet with Henry and, and Bruce, and/or Bruce. If that's what they would like to do, but we should go ahead and release the RFP.
That was just my opinion.
Motion's been made to release the RFP.
Does that motion include the budget committee meeting with the attorneys?
Not necessarily, no. It's just a motion to release the RFP.
I'll second.
David seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to release the RFP. Hearing none. All in favor? One, two, three, four. All opposed? One, two, three. Passes four to three. Item eight, May zoning, May eight, two thousand eighteen zoning permits. Nothing? Other new business you want to talk about?
This one on, in your, this, I forgot about this, and I want to show you all something. Alex, which lights go down here? You got it? All right, so, I want to show you something real quick and get your input. As you know, since day one, I've been here, I hear about Kroger's, 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 Starbucks, traffic, and you know, three days before Christmas, we had a fatality out there at Belinda and the, the bypass out there. So, it's been on my mind pretty much every day, because I go out there and drink a lot of Starbucks coffee and go to Kroger's and go to Applebee's and, and whatnot. And I'm not sure which light would be better here. Let's do that real quick. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. So, here's Kroger's, and here's now where Starbucks is. We're just looking at the Google map. So, something's been on my mind about access and problems there. And I think some of the solutions are fairly obvious. Well, I talked to Earl, our city engineer. I've talked with our police chief. And we got the KDOT folks to come down a couple weeks ago on a rainy Monday. And the district engineer came down, top engineers from the state, and we specifically said, we need a solution here. What we're asking for them to do is get us a traffic light here. We're like, at some point, we've got to protect these left-hand turns, because we had fatality here. You guys know, there, there's multiple issues here. And first, I want to say this. Planning commission caused some of these. I mean, at some point, we've had developments, and you guys have looked at them, like naturally you would. And access is part of that, but again, we didn't do traffic studies. You know, we've tried to do, we have a light here, we have a light here. We have a frontage road. It's not where you normally would want a frontage road for stacking. We got entrance cuts. Well, now, yesterday I found out Liquor Barn's putting a drive-through right here, like Kroger's does. You know, you can come into the pharmacy and loop around. They're going to do that there, too. That's laying on my desk right now. Plus, you've got Starbucks. One of the big problems, as you know, the movements come in like this, and the stacking can't get out when the light changes. One of the problems is the frontage road. Now, in the community I lived in, we had a lot of frontage roads, and we ended up taking them out. Because the problem was, the depth of a frontage road needs to be about a hundred and eighty feet back before you, you don't want a road to come and create these bottlenecks like this, as we know. The perfect world, you'd have a frontage road that kind of loops to the back, or in this area. But this is a problem. So, we brought the state in. Earl was here, I was here, the police chief was here, and the engineers. We sat right in this room and we, this exact exhibit, and we just brainstormed, what could we do? And our first request to KDOT was, we want a traffic light at Belinda. Got a neighborhood here. We've got a lot of seniors back in here, restaurants. These left-hand turns are the most dangerous move, motion you might make. And the reason why people are going left is because this is a mess. And so, some of these folks here go here, some go down here, as you all know, because they're like, I'm not going to wait. I'm going to go this way. State tells us the warrant is not there to get a traffic light at Belinda. It's not going to happen. There's just not enough traffic. So, my answer to them was, well, how many people have to die before we get a traffic light? And they said, honestly, it'll, after four or five deaths, state will come come in, put a traffic light. That's how we do business in Kentucky. Y'all know that. It doesn't meet the traffic warrants till you have so many fatalities, and they'll come in and put in a light. So my issue is, let's not wait till we have the next fatality. We need a traffic light. So what the state suggested is, we don't have the warrants, but what Earl and I are talking about, and it's so obvious on this drawing, is look at this. This development to Belinda, this is a city street that dead-ends. There's a stub here, so someday there was supposed to be a connection. My challenge to the city was, let's do it now. The more opportunities we have to get out of this development than one choke point, there's, the chief lives back here. He said, you know, it's crazy, I drive all the way around to come around in here, and if there was a connection somewhere, folks can go into the neighborhood, it's another relief valve to get to other ways to get out. The more connectivity, the better. The state said, if we'd make this connection, that would justify the traffic light. And they'd come in and put in the light. Bigs, so Band-Aid fix number one, that the city needs to do, is they need to put a divided median in right here. So that forces everyone to go into the, that we, we just cut this thing in half, is what we do. You've seen that in other communities, when they have frontage roads too close to the main road. The first solution is, you got to cut that off right there. Earl says we can do that tomorrow, but I can't find Earl ever. I was surprised he wasn't here, man. But he says we can do that tomorrow. And what that does is, if we cut that off, and the state said we could do that, it forces everyone to come in, we get better left-hand turns coming out, we don't have this three-way, four-way stops, and a three-way stop scenario, that when the light turns green, everyone's jockeying to get in this short stacking, and we don't get enough cars out of the parking lot. The other answer is, it gives another left-hand turn protected movement, that every left-hand turn, and now, instead of focusing here, I want you guys to look at the whole development, is really what planners do. And the state zeroed right in on this. This whole development is not laid out right. What we really need is a left-hand turn here, and they suggested a right-in, right-out only here. So that this whole thing starts to function together. You got a left-hand, you got a light that gets everyone out here, a light that gets everyone out here, access across the parking lots, access across the road, and this, and this side of the road. Because again, traffic light would be valuable here, because the fire station's over here, too. Eventually, look, we're going to have a frontage road, same situation here someday, which, by the way, is going to be deep enough, this is how deep you'd want a frontage road, reverse frontage road. And the state said, this thing could be reconfigured to a right-in, right-out at both sides, with traffic light, traffic light, and all this interconnectivity. They said they were willing to do that for us, if we started with this. And we actually have money for this subdivision, bond money. We have about $12,000 for this Rebel Road, it's finished, that we could put the seed money in to get this done. If the city would acquire the right-of-way, and the city would build the street, Earl tells me they would do this. If we could do this, the state said they'd come in, do the light, mill the, you know, as you go, as you try to go left out of Applebee's, you know, the problem is, you pull out, as you go, you think you're going to go nine mile an hour, and you hit the up-and-down thing, and you slow up more. So when you make this movement, I know what happens. I mean, you come out here, and you think you're going to go, and you, you see a car, and you think, I got it. Well, he's probably going 60 instead of 45, and you go here, and then you have to slow up because of this weird median. This whole intersection needs to have a little massage, a traffic light. Also, beat up the state about the speed limits. I said, I've never seen a 55 mile an hour speed limit in an urban section in a city anywhere in Kentucky. Because when we get past this point right here, we go to 55 mile an hour around that bypass. In an urban section, it's 45 in here, and these people are flying through here. And that's the problem. So, big picture, you know, Band-Aid fix one, divided median. Number two, if we can make this connection, the state would put a light in. So we'd still have a light, a light, and a light. But the real fix then is to make this a right-in, right-out, a formed right-in, right-out. That makes, so if you're coming into Krogers, you can go in, but when you leave, you'd have to come out to the left, or you could go out to the other left, whatever. It just starts to spread the traffic out. Some folks may just head on home this way. So, just giving you an update on what we did with the state. Yes, Jerry, go ahead, or Vince?
I've got a little bit of background in driving traffic safety, as Mr. Morgan might attest to. And, and some things that I, I know and understand, traffic lights don't guarantee stops.
That's right.
We have fatalities in intersections with traffic lights, as well as intersections without traffic lights. And just recently, in Lexington, yesterday, somebody got killed because somebody ran a red light.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no guarantee there. Secondly, as we look at the Kroger intersection at Liquor Barn
Right there.
There's plenty of room to make a double-left turn coming out of there.
Coming out.
And you could take out twice as many cars in the same amount of time. Third point is, I've timed that traffic light there, and even when traffic is stacked up trying to get out, sometimes it changes after eight seconds.
It's not
Or 10 seconds.
Yep.
Or 12 seconds. 12 seconds is the most I've seen it last green for the exiting traffic.
Yep.
So if that traffic light could be adjusted to 30 seconds, or something like that, we can move a tremendous amount of traffic. There's enough room to make a double-left turn out of that intersection, just like we make double-lefs at Houstonville Road and the bypass. And to me, as a short-term fix, that could quickly alleviate a lot of that backup traffic there.
Yeah, I agree with Jerry. And the thing, though, that this, these folks live here, are still, this is their natural, and this is, and this is another interesting point the state pointed out to us, we weren't even thinking about. This is actually a city street, and this is a city street. This is a driveway into a shopping center. So the city street needs to have some serious consideration, because ultimately, we're going to have a street network back in here, more homes back in here. You know, these folks aren't doing this to get out. They're taking this chance right here, which over time, is going to get worse, because this is only half-built out, and eventually, you're going to see more, whoops, just lost power in the building.
Over.
So that's that.
Also, if we make that a right-out
Right-in, right-out.
Only, those people that want to go east on the bypass coming, where do they get
They would either, they'd either have to go to one of those further intersections at Five Star, or at, at Applebee's.
Okay. I'm just curious what the thought
So, and the thought is, with the right-in, right-out, the way the state likes, reasons they like that, is ultimately, the real solution is three traffic lights, but then you're slowing down real flow on, on peak hour. The right-in, right-out gets everyone a way to get in, but the outs, then, are protected by lefts further at the end. So we're really making the whole development function, then just thinking about Krogers. I appreciated them coming down and spending the time and driving here, and talking to us, and thinking about that fatality and those lights, and, and I'm going to, we're just talking every day now. So, go ahead, Vince, sorry.
Yeah, as, well, as far as the, that connection that you're talking about making there, has there been any thought about the traffic it would create in that neighborhood? Because it would definitely change the
Well
Traffic for kids that play there, and things like that?
Well, that's what the state said. That would justify the warrant right now, because there'd be enough probably folks that, from here, would probably try to get out here to maybe go to the bypass, because they currently have to go all the way around. That there would probably be, that would justify the light. But, but you also, what you're doing is, you're interconnecting a shopping center in a neighborhood, which right now, what we encourage is, everybody that lives here, the map's big. Everyone gets out on the road, comes around, and really, you know, they're part of the problem. So the more connectivity we can do, but what, what the fear might be, is this becomes a cut-through
Right.
To go downtown.
Yeah. And also, see, the ones that are on the back end of the Kroger
Mm-hmm.
And Liquor Barn, the houses.
Well, but you got to sort of
Very close to the road, and just like we were talking about
Well, this wouldn't be the cut-through, Vince. This wouldn't be the cut-through, because it's, this sort of all loops together. The next-through road, what Earl was saying, the cut-through would probably be going up Rebel. So it'd be this road would probably encourage, and it'd be the next street up, I don't know the name of the next-through road that goes all the way over to Houstonville Road.
Okay.
He didn't think these would encourage any cut-through traffic. You already can go through here.
The street by Five Star already goes through
Already goes through.
The neighborhood anyway.
Right, right.
So
I mean, if you connect them together, it becomes, it becomes a thoroughfare.
All the way around.
Not a dead end.
Well, but I think the issue is, we're going to eventually have a connection here. This justifies the light. Now, what's interesting to me is, this is, this is a little park, I'm told.
Yeah.
But I'm no genius here, but I don't know why we didn't put a pat driveway right here. I mean, interconnecting, I know back in the day, you kept your develop, your commercial separate from, you just didn't want, but these people are the ones that are going and getting to Starbucks, and buying a six-pack, or going to Krogers, or going to eat at Applebee's, or Zaxby's. The more connectivity we can make, the less burden we put, like Jerry said, the less burden we put on this intersection.
Right.
So I think it's, it's all those pieces together. Short-term, what Earl says, is he's going to make this fix here, and I'm going to give him what Jerry mentioned, that we could still divide that median and get dual-lefs to work in there.
Exactly.
Because look at the, it's not even lined up. The median cut is big, and you see how wide it is?
Plenty of room.
Plenty of room to do that. So I just wanted to give you an update on what we did. It was a Monday, and we got the KDOT folks to come down. We're trying to build up some rapport with them a tad bit. And we want them to put some money on these roads for us, you know.
Also, that, you know, the next road over, where it goes into that hole
Mm-hmm.
And there's a, it'd be good if there was no left turn there.
Yeah, exactly.
Because that becomes really bad when the car, you know, right after the car wash, and then there's an equipment place after the huddle house. Then there's almost like a dead end, but it's not. You can go out into the bypass, and some people turn left there, but they can't get out, because they can't see over the bridge. You know, the bridge is, it's pretty dangerous there, too. I mean, I go that way because I go right. Like, it's easier for me to go home that way.
The chief said, the chief said, with the fire department, you know, they're struggling with left-hand turns out of the fire department, too. So they, they like this idea, too. And then eventually, you could see this natural reverse frontage road we'd have across the road. It's just an idea. Just wanted to give you guys an update. Don't know if we'll get another development project to do this, but anything we can do. And by the way, the state did point out that this is peak hour stuff. We don't really have any real traffic, in their opinion, big, big problems. This is peak hour. Most of the times, you go out there, everything flows nice and, you know, slow. But we all know, living here, that that's a problem between about 9:00 o'clock and 6:00 o'clock.
It's always bad.
Well, but, but are you there, 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 are you there at 8:30 at night, or 9:00? Well, I get their, their opinion is peak hour, but for us, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, it's bad. But they said, you know, it's not that bad, compared to Lexington. They, they use Lexington as their benchmark for everything.
Well, the whole idea years ago was to alleviate downtown traffic.
That's right.
The bypass. Now, we've got the same problem on the bypass as we had downtown.
That's what happens.
When you put up traffic lights and build, you create congestion. So that's one of the ideas with the 2168 corridor, to move traffic as opposed to create congestion.
I beat them up on that roundabout while they're here, too, and, and said, hey, you know, I, I don't understand how grass is growing through concrete, and weeds are this tall. That's supposed to be a nice amenities, ugliest thing I've ever seen.
Is there any discussion, Stephen, about the repave of Main Street there, from Stanford up to First there?
We asked them about that.
I mean, that's getting to be really rough.
Well, we don't, Earl threw them another idea about another road extension from Ghost Pike that would get all the way to Lexington Avenue, too, that he's possibly been thinking about. So we kind of hit them up about several things. And they told us, we have no projects on the six-year plan at all. We don't have a single project of all the counties that are in the District 7 region. We're the only county that doesn't even have a project on state plan. And that's a reflection of our legislative guys. For some reason, we don't, they're, we just don't have a single major capital improvement for Boyle County, other than routine maintenance. So, it was good to talk to them. I think we're going to do this baby steps, get them down here, get on their email, start talking to them on the phone, and hopefully, we'll bring you guys some plans on that.
Any other questions, discussion, any other new business? Good for the order. Hearing none, need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say that several of us watched this whole development, and it grew and got really difficult. Never did we ever hear the commission discuss the problems that might be there. Never were there any proposals to consider. And I want to commend you all, and Steve, for taking the time to think. Now, this is all done. You can't undo it. You can only maybe help it out. But in the future, we hope to see more discussion, more comments, and more recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. And we plan on that without question, at least, as long as I'm in this seat. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
Jim makes it. Vince seconds. All in favor? We adjourn. Thank you.